Good evening. I am Frances Smith, the first Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Coos County. Welcome all of you to this forum tonight, which is a voter service project of the League. I want to thank all of the committee members and volunteers who helped make this forum possible, and also our co-sponsors, the Coos Bay Library and the North Bend Library. Also, the League is grateful to the Coos Bay School District for the use of this facility, the student pages from the debate team, and to Drew Jones from KMH S Radio and his media assistants who are recording tonight's forum. The video recording will be available for viewing on the League's website. And finally, a special thanks goes to retired Circuit Court Judge Paula Bechtel, who is The Coos County League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, and our mission is to encourage the informed and active participations of citizens in government, to increase the understanding of major public policy issues, and to influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League takes political action on issues on which members have studied and reached agreement. Action positions can be developed at the national, the state, and the local level. The League never supports or opposes any political party or any candidate for elective office. We invite you to consider membership in the League, and information about membership is available in the lobby. There are also forms for voter registration and information about how to learn more about what's on your ballot. Tonight, we will first hear from the candidates for Coos County Commissioner, Position Three. During the second half of our forum, we will hear from candidates for Coos County Sheriff. Now, the League has developed a fair process for this forum. All of the candidates have agreed to abide by the ground rules, and several of those rules also apply to you, our audience. We have asked you to not bring campaign signs and clothing into the auditorium. We are requiring that all applause, after Paula, all applause and any other audible response be held until the end of the forum. We also require that you shut off your cellphone, and you may not record or tape this event. A recording will be posted on the League's website within a few days. Thank you, everyone, for abiding by these rules. You have been given a form to write a question for the candidates. Raise your hand, and a page will pick up the form. The moderator will submit as many questions to the candidates as time allows. And it's now time to hear from the candidates. Our moderator, Paula Bechtel, will do introductions and explain the procedures.
This is my first time doing this, so be patient with me, also. We are going to be hearing first from the county commissioners between 7:00 and a little bit before 8:00 o'clock, and then, after a short recess, we will hear from the candidates for Coos County Sheriff. Each candidate will have two minutes for introductory statements. Questions. If the question specifies both candidates, the moderator, that's me, will determine the order in which candidates will respond, and they will each have one minute to respond. If a question is addressed to a particular candidate, that candidate will have one minute to respond; the opposing candidate will have 30 seconds to respond. The candidate to whom the question was originally addressed may have 30 seconds for a rebuttal. Candidates may also submit questions to the screeners on the same written question form used by the audience. Each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks to summarize their qualifications. At the end of the forum, candidates are invited to stay a few minutes to answer questions from individual audience members. And let me introduce our two candidates for county commissioner. Melissa Cribbins is a Coos County Commissioner and a licensed attorney who was raised in Coos County and returned to Coos County to raise her family and start a small business with her husband Troy. Rod Taylor is a small businessman, husband, farmer, and grandfather, whose civic leadership experiences motivated him to run for county commissioner. He believes the people of Coos County are ready for the change he advocates. And alphabetically, we'll start with the first question. Will be first addressed to Melissa Cribbins, and she will have, again, one minute to respond, and then, oh, excuse me, they have to do their introductory statements. See, I'm new at this. So, Melissa Cribbins, you can give your two-minute introduction, and then Mr. Taylor can give his two minutes, and then we'll start with the questions.
Thank you. Is the timekeeper directly in front?
Pardon me?
Is the timekeeper directly in front? Thank you very much. And, sorry, you'll show 15 seconds or 30 seconds? 30 seconds, and then no time left? Perfect. Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Melissa Cribbins. It's my honor to be your Coos County Commissioner. I grew up in Coquille, right across from the courthouse. For much of my childhood, I never dreamed that I might be a commissioner someday. I would look out my window, and I would, you know, see that fountain, and I would play in the fountain. And I never thought about ever actually working in the courthouse. I never thought about what it might be like to lead the county. But when I returned back with my husband and my children, determined to raise a family here and put down roots here, I started to think about what the future of Coos County was. And much like many of you, I wanted the future of Coos County to be better than it currently was. And so I started to think, and I started to talk with friends about how we could make this county a better place, what we could do, what we could change, what we could do to build a future here in this place. I took care of my father when he was sick, and he and I talked a lot about Coos County, and how we could dream for it to be better. And so, when I became Coos County Commissioner, I started implementing some of those ideas. One of the things that I have worked on very solidly is building a stronger economic base for our county. We don't ever want to be in the position again where if one industry goes down, our county goes into an economic recession. So I've been a strong supporter of timber, and fisheries, and tourism, and our other small manufacturing facilities, in order to ensure that we are economically resilient. I've also been a big supporter of, you know, dealing with some of our issues like housing, mental health, and healthcare for our citizens. All of those things make Coos County a great place to live. We also need to invest strongly in broadband, in order to ensure that people are able to move here and work from home. These are the things that we can do to really move Coos County forward, and thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Rod Taylor, and I have lived in Banden for 19 years. When I moved to Coos County, it was not a particularly prosperous place. Raised our kids here, and they all went to Banden schools, and now I have my three kids in the area, and three grandchildren as well. And I'm really concerned for their futures. I'm concerned for what is ahead of them in terms of opportunities, in terms of housing availability, in terms of income opportunities. And I see some gaps. I see some ways that we could make changes in Coos County that would be commensurate with good judgment, with good stewardship of our resources, and good stewardship of our human resources, which is our most important asset as a county. I do think that we have a number of things that we can do, that we can change here in Coos County, to be once again the most, really, one of the most prosperous counties in the state, which we should be by accident, but we're not. And I think that it really demands that we ask the questions, why are we not? What is holding us up? There are some things that we're going to address through the remainder of the night tonight, and I hope that what you hear from me is ideas that are fresh, that are innovative, coming from my problem solver mind. 20 years in my current existing business has taught me quite a bit about how to operate something that really works and generates prosperity for more than one person, and more for just the people, more than just for the people at the top, but for every one of we the people. And I hope to share all that with you tonight. Thank you.
All right. The first question will be addressed to Melissa Cribbins, and she will have one minute to respond, and then Mr. Taylor will have one minute following that. And the first question is, "What are the duties of a Coos County Commissioner, and what aspects of the job are you most looking forward to if elected?"
Thank you very much. The major duty of a Coos County Commissioner is to manage the budget of Coos County. We don't have a county administrator, and we have $125 million budget. So it's very important that commissioners understand how the budget works, and where every dime of that money goes. We only have discretion over about $25 million of that. The rest of it is all state or federal funds that are mandated by the state or federal government as to where they go. We work closely with the county treasurer in order to ensure that those dollars are spent wisely, and that we know where every dime of that goes. More importantly than that, and this is where I really feel that the duty of a commissioner lies, you know, it's important to be fiscally responsible, you've got to do that, that's the main thing. But you also have to be the liaison between our citizens and government. We are the local face of government. We are the people that you come to if you're having difficulty. We can connect you with people at the state, or people at the federal level, and make sure that we make government work for you, because that's really our job.
I believe that, obviously, the commissioners have a significant role in being the representatives of the people, and I am one of us. We're all... And that representation really is critical to keep government at the county level working for the interests of everybody. This concerns our roads, this concerns our infrastructure, this concerns our business environment that we create. And I do believe that we can become that prosperous county that I mentioned. We should be that. And I do believe that we should be finding ways to generate additional county revenues so that we can wean ourselves from state and federal monies that are paid with printed fake money that belongs to our grandchildren, and I intend to turn that around for one thing.
And here's one of our first questions from the audience, and having the candidates take turns, this will be a question for Mr. Taylor to answer first, with one minute, and then Ms. Cribbins will have second chance to answer the question. "In what ways can the county commissioners collaborate across jurisdictional boundaries to address issues of housing availability and affordability? How do infrastructure limitations affect county policy in this area?"
Well, that's a lot of question to pack into a one-minute answer, but I'll do my best. I believe that what we need to do in Coos County is to establish a greater degree of local control. The problems that we have here in Coos County, germane to housing, really do not originate here in Coos County. They originate in Salem and in Washington, DC. And I believe what we need to do is really have an honest, hard look as a county, as the people of the county, what policies are coming down from other government agencies that are hamstringing our ability to provide affordable housing and a good construction, trades environment that we really need to have here. I think that what we need to do is interact with those agencies that are sending down mandates in terms of zoning and planning that are limiting our ability, and we need to fix that and straighten it out right away.
I have a history of working closely with our neighboring jurisdictions on this housing policy issue, and on housing generally. One of the things that we realize is a lot of people have to live outside of the city that they work in, in order to be able to afford housing. For that reason, I have partnered with Curry County in order to get a housing coordinator. We have worked together, and we've received grant funds in order to get that position filled. That person coordinates all the way from Reedport to Brookings, because that's how big our commute shed is, in order to work on housing issues up and down the coast. Also, I lobbied in coordination with the cities of Coos Bay and North Bend to get $1 million last legislative session, in order to have funding to work on a coordinated plan to deal with homelessness and housing for our region. We are currently working on that, and we're putting out a strategic plan that will, in coordination with input from our citizens, help us to inform our housing policy as we move forward. Thank you.
And another question from the audience, and this will then be, Ms. Cribbins will get to answer this question first, and then Mr. Taylor, each have a minute. "What steps would you take to ensure that the general public is kept informed about your activities as county commissioner, and how would you create better opportunities for citizen input?"
That's a great question. I try to post a lot of the stuff that I do on Facebook, so citizens can know what I do. Facebook, you know, is not, of course, an ideal platform, but it is a good way for people to weigh in and see the things that you're doing. At our commissioner meetings, we also report out on what we've been doing at the end of the meeting. Each commissioner gives their comments on what their work has been over the last couple of weeks, and we go ahead and report out on that. In the past, we've tried a lot of things like moving commissioner meetings around the county in order to let people come to our meetings. Unfortunately, most people are busy with their lives, and they have other things going on. But now we're doing meetings virtually, we're streaming them on YouTube, they're also on Channel 14, and so it gives people a great opportunity to watch those meetings when it's convenient for them. So if it's convenient for you at 2:00 in the morning to watch a commissioner meeting, you can turn it on and stream it then. And that's how I really feel like government should work for people. They should be able to watch it whenever it works for them, and that should be the way that we communicate with our citizens. Thank you.
Regular updates of a website presence for people to be able to go and refer to is, of course, I think, a fundamental requirement of serving in an office like this, and certainly that is something that I would do in serving you. I do believe that moving the, roving the commissioner meetings around the county to each community, and also changing the time from 9:30 on Tuesday morning to 6:30 on Tuesday evening, would facilitate a much greater attendance and participation. When you watch a meeting online after it's already happened, that is entirely different from being there and participating in it. The citizen comments portion of the COB meetings, or the BOC meetings, is actually, I think, one of the most essential parts of the interface between government and the people. And I believe that properly marketed out, properly spreading the word, those evening meetings would be attended with much greater numbers and success.
And another question from the audience. This one will be first answered by Mr. Taylor. "What experiences do you have in resolving personnel disputes, and how would you approach conflict resolution?"
When I worked as a general contractor, I had a number of opportunities to interface with other contractors in the community where that was, up in Bellingham, Washington. And that was a 13-year enterprise where I had multiple opportunities to actually mediate between disputing parties and participate in that process. We also had employees in our cabinet shop, we had painting employees, we had carpentry employees, and of course, you know, construction guys are not always the... Sometimes issues arise. So I've dealt with those issues. I've dealt with those issues in a shipboard environment when I worked as a maritime operating engineer, and I've also, of course, had those issues arise in my 20-year business that I'm in right now. And, you know, it's really simple. If you use common sense, decency, and understand people's problems, you can usually resolve everything that comes.
So, you know, the fun part about a small county is you get the opportunity to do different work as a commissioner, and as part of my job, I've served as interim HR Director when we were in between HR Directors. And Coos County, as some of you know, has actually seven unions. So, mediating personnel disputes is always interesting. Luckily, I came from a background of being an attorney and having experience dealing with HR disputes. I will say that the most important thing when you are dealing with personnel issues is that you can't assume that people won't stay in a relationship forever, because the truth is, you know, even if I'm arguing with someone and they have the cubicle next to me, we're going to have to get along. And so I've always taken a very collaborative approach to that. There have been different times when, you know, we've brought in a mediator, brought in someone to work on the relationship, and the important thing is to remember that everybody's coming at things from a different perspective, and that it's important that we try to get along, because that's what's best for the county. Thank you.
All right. And we do have some questions that have been addressed to specific candidates, and just to remind you of the rules, because I keep forgetting them myself. If a question is addressed to a particular candidate, that candidate will have one minute to respond; the other candidate will have 30 seconds, if they wish to respond to as well, and then the candidate to whom the question was originally addressed may have 30 seconds for rebuttal. So, the first question is addressed specifically to Ms. Cribbins. "I am noticing large campaign donations. Are you in favor of campaign finance reform?"
Thank you very much. One of the things that I'm really proud of is that my campaign donations come from people in Coos County. And I think that speaks a lot to my campaign, and the fact that I have always represented the citizens of Coos County, and that I deeply care about its citizens. If you did a pie chart of my campaign donations, I would tell you that 95% of them come from our citizens. And that comes from years of building a relationship, of saying what I'm going to do, and then doing it. And so I believe that Coos County does a good job with campaign donations. We don't have a lot of big money that comes in from the outside, as many of you know. My campaign donations are all reported in ORSTAR, including any in-kind donations, and I'm completely transparent when it comes to the money that funds my campaign.
Transparency is a requirement. All candidates must report their donations to ORSTAR, which, of course, we do in my campaign as well. But my campaign does not have $1.3 million in it. Our campaign has been run, so far, on just a little over $11,000. And so, really, you know, I think that's really representative of what the scale is, and who's really working for the people. We've got very small donations. We don't have any $50,000 and $60,000 donations to our campaign.
I think my opponent confused as a county commissioner campaign and a state senate campaign. Thank you.
All right. And this is a question specifically addressed to Mr. Taylor. "One of your plans to deal with the homeless is to send them back to the communities they came from. What are the logistics of your plan? How will you accomplish this? How much will it cost, and where will you find the money?"
Great. So that's just one little part of a plan to deal with street people who are not there, most of them by their own choice. One of the options that I have presented is, in fact, to send people back to the places that they came from, because we do have cities all over the west coast sending these people to our area. And if those people are amenable to returning to where they came from, then yes, I believe that we should return them and provide a small stipend when they return, and of course, a bus ticket to get there. That's just one part of it. What really is going to solve the problem of people living on the street is reinstituting a, more of a community-based approach to these problems. This is going to really require the assertion of faith solutions, and so the combination and collaborative effort between government, churches, and community leaders. There's a lot more to say about that. One minute's not very much time.
The homeless issue is not a simple problem. We do censuses every year, and we know that many of the people that are homeless are actually from here. The Deveraux Center currently runs a program called Homeward Bound that helps people return to the communities that they're from, or places where they have family support, if they can prove that they have family support in those communities. We realize that people are homeless for many different reasons. Some of that is lack of housing, some of that is addiction, some of that is mental health. We have to approach it as a multi-pronged approach. There's no simplistic answer to homelessness. We have to be able to meet people where they're at. Thank you.
And another question addressed specifically to Ms. Cribbins. "If re-elected, what are the most pressing issues you want to work on?"
So there's always a lot of issues facing the county. Sorry, the budget is always one, but we've actually managed to stabilize the budget and make sure that the county is accessing as many sources of funding as they possibly can in order to keep the county running stably and smoothly without increasing taxes. However, we have a problem with the public safety budget. We currently have a levy out there in order to allow us to fund 150 jail beds, which would address many of the issues in our community. I am in favor of the public safety levy. I've also been working on housing, mental health, and homelessness issues. Those are the things that really affect the quality of life of our citizens, and the most pressing issues that we really have got to address in order to keep our communities moving forward, and in order to keep our businesses growing and improve the economic climate of Coos County.
Yeah, I think that what we really need to do is form this collaborative effort, as I mentioned, between faith organizations, government, and other civic groups, to reach out to people like Thomas, and Graham, and Joe, who we've met just in the last couple of weeks. And actually, two of those guys are from Coos Bay. They've lived here all their lives, and another is not. But they all need... But they all need ministry to their hearts and the hand up that we can provide.
And this is a question addressed specifically to Mr. Taylor. You have proposed placing ballot measures before the county to reform the election process and procedures. What specific reforms are you proposing?
I'm sorry, with the echo, I didn't quite pick up every word of the question. Can you read it one more time, please?
Sure. You have proposed placing ballot measures before the county voters to reform the election process and procedures. What specific reforms are you proposing?
Oh, that's really easy. There are a number of reforms we need. We need to overcome the, the problems that have come to the fore with mail-in voting. And if you're not aware, the fact of the matter is that we have 10% phantom voters in every county in Oregon. And if you're not familiar with these facts, then you would do well to actually research that a little bit. The fact of the matter is that elections are impenetrable if they are conducted on one day, not counted for a month, if they're conducted in person, not electronically or through the mail, on paper, not on machines, counted by hand, not machines, and with ID. Those are the, those are the reforms that I propose, and I believe that that is what will straighten out the elections in Oregon and in Coos County.
You know, it's interesting. I hear a lot of comments about election reform, primarily from my opponent, but I can tell you that anyone who's ever gone to the clerk's office has told me about how impressed they are with all of the election security and with all of the careful attention there is to making sure that your vote is safe. If you're sincerely concerned about election security and about the sanctity of your vote, I would encourage you to call the clerk's office. I would encourage you to call the Secretary of State. They are more than willing to answer your questions. They are more than willing to walk you through the process. Thank you.
The fact of the matter is that those voting machines, those tabulation machines have modems in them. And this was admitted last week in a court case in Washington County. If you don't know that, then, I'm sorry, but you're misinformed. The fact of the matter is that we had 10 times the normal number of adjudicated ballots in the 2020 election, and then the clerk's office was unable to produce those images because in violation of federal and state law, they did not retain those records. So I have to know why there is 10 times the number of adjudicated ballots that now cannot be produced.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
All right. These are questions addressed to both candidates, and so Ms. Cribbins will answer this one first. The Port of Coos Bay has announced a development project for a North Spit container ship facility. What is your position on that?
My position is that I'm in favor of that project. You know, the Port of Coos Bay is one of the finest deepwater ports from, you know, Portland to San Francisco. And frankly, we are missing an opportunity if we don't take advantage of that and develop that port. There are great opportunities for the port to really create economic development for Coos County, for our citizens to be prosperous, and for our children to have good-paying jobs and be able to live and work in our communities. We can talk about housing, we can talk about mental health, we can talk about healthcare, but none of it means anything if we don't have good-paying jobs to go with it and a chance for people to prosper and do better in our community. Thanks.
The deepwater port is a piece of infrastructure that will facilitate a number of different kinds of potential prosperity for the county. I believe that it is overall an asset and will be a benefit to the county. And I do believe that it will also provide us the, the requirement, the need and the mechanisms to improve the transport to the I-5 corridor. There's, you know, it's, it's, it's really, I think, one of the, one of the best things that we can do here. It's a straighter line from our port here across to the ports in Asia than San Francisco or Seattle. And we do have the potential to develop a lot of economic opportunity as a result of the development of the port.
Again, questions for both candidates to answer, so starting with Mr. Taylor. What is your position on the county measure for a five-year levy to increase jail funding and capacity?
I believe that there are other ways to provide adequate funding for the jail. The problem is that these, these measures were not undertaken earlier, and so we have come up against this problem where we don't have adequate funding. And so an emergent measure like another tax is the proposal that's come to the fore. I don't support the levy. I do support law enforcement and the jail, and I believe that there are other ways that we can find to fund the jail. For instance, taking back control of the Coos Bay wagon road lands according to the Coos Bay Wagon Road Act of 1939, which has apparently been forgotten. I believe that there are other avenues to increase our county revenues and thus buttress funding for the sheriff's office. And by the way, I also believe that the sheriff's budget should be decoupled and not under the control of the commissioners in order to keep political lines very clear.
I am in favor of the jail levy. I can tell you that your county commissioners over the last 10 years have pinched every penny until it screamed. We have worked tirelessly to find increased revenue in every opportunity that we can. Unfortunately, at some point, inflation has outpaced the property tax increase, and so we have gotten behind on how much we can pay our deputies. Currently, public safety uses over 75% of our general fund budget. You know, that's the amount of money that we have discretion over, that's the amount of money that we have the authority to spend on public safety. Frankly, there is no additional money to pay deputies more. We have the, one of the lowest-paid deputies in the county. Frankly, only powers is paid less than our deputies are the last time I checked. We would love to be able to staff all 150 jail beds. We currently budget for 98, and we fund that. But as inflation has outpaced the amount that we can spend on our deputies, we're just simply not able to fund 150 beds.
I believe I have an opportunity here.
You do not. Sorry. That's yours, moderator. I apologize.
This was a question addressed to, this was a question addressed to both candidates, so you don't get a rebuttal.
All right.
The next question also is addressed to both candidates. Starting with Ms. Cribbins, I believe, yes. What do you consider the highest priorities faced by the county that the commissioners are in a position to address? What have the county commissioners failed to do in recent years that you consider important to achieve in the upcoming term?
You know, I think the biggest issue that we have to address right now is public safety, homelessness, mental health. We've always believed that we could address those issues without having to ask the citizens for more taxes or for a levy. We have worked incredibly hard to do that. And I think in some ways that, you know, that's where we have fallen behind. We have really not wanted to ask anyone to give us more funds because we know that all of you are also on a fixed income and that you don't have the additional money to give us. And at this point, we are at the point where we're saying, you know, we do need to solve the public safety issue. Unfortunately, we have to ask citizens if they're willing to give more in order to have more beds, because we have used all of the county funds that we can in order to make that happen. And in that vein, we've also worked hard on homelessness, mental health, housing, in order to divert people from the jail and try to resolve this issue in any way we can. Thank you.
There are a lot of ways that the county can generate additional revenue. And one of the things that I think really is incumbent upon government employees in a, in a small county such as ours is to be really fiscally responsible. Now, to me, $60,000 on a county credit card is not really what I would call pinching pennies. Traveling to a globalist convention in, in Colorado, you know, counter to the local control beliefs of Coos County residents is not really keeping, in keeping with that. I believe that we can generate what we need locally with repurposing or reframing the management of our timber, reintroducing county-held lands that are unnecessary back into the private sector and onto the tax rolls, and by limiting the spending that we, that we have. Thank you.
And again, starting with Mr. Taylor. The estuary management plan is overdue for an update. How important is it to find the resources necessary to complete this task?
Well, estuary, estuary management is, is an important aspect of our, all of our marine ecosystem, particularly the inland. How important is it to, to find that funding? Well, I, I mean, it is, it is important. The, you know, we all are interested in stewarding our resources, our wildlife, and preserving as much as we can of all of the, particularly the salmon-run habitat and the steelhead-run habitat. And this is actually an issue that is, is really, really at the fore right now. The salmon runs that we had in this county used to be legendary, and they are not anymore. And this does play right into this issue. ODF and W policies to eliminate hatch boxes was a mistake, and it has to change, and we have to change it locally.
I am the liaison to the planning department, and I've always championed the updates to the Coos Bay estuary management plan. Frankly, it hasn't been updated in about 40 years. They have started on the scientific studies and worked on this, but it always comes down to a funding issue. And we really do need to find the funds to update the estuary management plan because it inhibits economic development on the areas surrounding the estuary. But it also keeps us in this permanent state of not knowing what is good development around the estuary and what might damage the ecosystem. So I really appreciated the support of the cities of Coos Bay and North Bend and the Port of Coos Bay, South Slough, and working together. They did receive an award a few years ago for the Partnership for Coastal Waterways for all of their work on updating the estuary management plan, but it's still not done. We need to do more. We need to get it finished and get it approved in order to get it in place and be able to know what's good development and what's not on the estuary. Thank you.
Ms. Cribbins, when addressing long-term land use planning, especially regarding forests, water quality, and water supply, how would concerns about climate change and the sustainability of natural resources factor into your thinking?
I, I think that's always a challenge. As I mentioned, I'm the liaison to planning. We try to think a lot about things like not locating critical infrastructure in areas where we know that there will be sea level rise. We work hard in order to ensure that infrastructure that we do site will be, you know, will pay off in value for the citizens, for the lifespan of the project. I think that it's important that we are thinking hard about the work that we do and the impacts that climate change may have on it. As citizens of our community and as stewards of county resources, we have to make sure that we're not having to redo projects because we didn't think about the potential future impacts of how sea level rise and, and change in climate might impact those.
You know, the sea levels were supposed to rise and inundate communities all over, all over the world by 2012, oh no, 2014, no, 2016, no, 2018, no. The sea levels have not actually appreciably risen. You know, the reality is that for us to think that, that climate change could be anthropomorphic, anthropogenic in nature is, is actually not based on any kind of real science.
And Mr. Taylor, what is your position on home rule? Are there other ways you would seek to reorganize county functions? Do you think that the county commissioners can set aside state laws and mandates when they disagree with them or think they're not in the best interests of residents?
I do believe that, that every law that comes from Salem or Washington DC needs to be evaluated in terms of its benefit or detriment to Coos County. And I do favor home rule. I do favor the creation of a home rule charter that is not, not like the one that failed in 2012. It had some really key deficiencies. But I do believe that the time has come and that the, the will of the people of Coos County is to, is to assert our local control, and the most efficacious means to accomplish that is going to be through a new home rule charter where we actually do a constitutional review of laws that are passed by a supermajority that is not always acting in the interests of all the people, but mostly in their own political interests. And I think it's time for us as a county, as the people here, to stand up against that.
I believe the citizens of Coos County have voted three times on home rule charters and have voted them down every time. I think that home rule charters are great when they're well-vetted and the citizens all agree with, you know, what's in the home rule charter. And I always support creating a charter committee and looking at how we're governed, because that's a great part about being a county. And Coos County in particular is that we are very independent and we are very, very determined to do what we want. So thank you.
And checking the time, I think we have time for one last question. And so this will be answered first by Ms. Cribbins. What experience, skills, and education do you have that would benefit you in serving as commissioner?
Thank you. I have been a Coos County commissioner for 10 years. I never thought that I would run for public office, never planned to run for public office. And I went to law school and frankly enjoyed being an attorney and thought I would be an attorney forever. I can say that my legal career has been helpful in being a public official. And I have enjoyed serving in office, still enjoy serving in office. I think being a county commissioner is a great role as an elected official because you really have that chance to interact with people directly and to talk to them about their thoughts, their concerns, their hopes and their dreams, and what they really want for their family. We are the first face of government that people come and they talk to. And I can tell you that nothing makes you feel better than when you actually help somebody solve a problem, especially one that they never thought they could solve, one that they never thought government would really give them help on. So many times, it's really not, you know, that complex of an issue, but people get so frustrated by trying to navigate government. Thank you.
Growing Growing up in, on a cattle ranch, growing hay, running tractors and cows and horses, and then moving into construction, and then moving into maritime engineering, and now having the small business that I've had running for over 20 years, has given me plenty of opportunity to figure out how to solve problems. I'm a problem solver by nature. Now, I don't believe that good government is necessarily formed by people who've been in government a long time. If you don't appreciate the decade of decline that we've seen in Coos County, then I would suggest that it might be time to look at a change in leadership and a change in way that, the ways that problems are approached and solved. For me, a small businessman, contractor, maritime engineer, that is actually a much more useful skill set than an attorney in terms of solving the problems for we, the people of Coos County, and I would ask for your vote to do that. Thank you.
We're not finished quite yet, so you may have thought that was the end, but we're now ready for the final conclusion, closing statements by the candidates. And because Ms. Cribbins got to go first, to, as an introduction, we'll let Mr. Taylor go first to close. So, each candidate will have one minute to make any closing remarks to further summarize their qualifications for serving, and then we will take a recess.
The problems that we encounter here in Coos County are eminently solvable. The solutions require innovation, courage, fortitude, and the support of the people of the county. It is my intention as a commissioner to formulate solutions that I believe will be effective based on input from many counselors, and then to put those solutions out to a vote to the people. And I believe that when we do that, we will find that we can stand together, that we can do it with creative ideas that will cause other counties around the state and around the nation to look at us as a model of a new way of running government. Running government that's actually responsive and interacting with the people and that actually stands up against a domineering and overreaching government out of Salem and Washington DC. I'd appreciate your vote to help us do that.
Ms. Cribbins?
Thank you all so much for being here tonight. Thank you to League of Women Voters, and thank you to the volunteers from the high school that are here. I grew up in Coos County. I've seen what happens when a county becomes too dependent on a single economic engine to move it forward. As a commissioner, I have focused on economic diversification, and we have, we've economically diversified. We have more opportunities in our county than we've ever had before. We need to continue to invest in things like workforce training, broadband, and infrastructure, because those are the paths forward for this county. Those are our opportunities and our future. I have worked tirelessly to bring Coos County's voice to places other than Coos County, because we are not going to get anywhere by talking to each other, because we all know what our story is. We all agree that Coos County needs better opportunities, but our voice has to be heard in places like Washington DC and Salem and Portland. We must tell our story, and we must explain why we are worth investing in and helping to move forward. Thank you.